Please rise to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Carrie Behrger. Paul Cuni?
Here.
Robert Lereway?
Here.
Randy P.?
Here.
Bill Shannon?
Here.
David Thomas?
Here. Everyone's here.
I'm here too.
You guys are here.
I'm new to the game.
Joe's not on here.
He must be an old one.
The only thing I have, I'm gonna just write Joe.
You told me before I come over here to watch.
Cereal and milk. Putting Joe in, oh Joe right there, yeah?
There's only three votes needed tonight.
Okay, so.
Oh, anyone even need to.
Okay. Seven. Okay, thank you.
Now we have four. Okay, agenda is before you. Anything to be discussed? Challenge? If not, pass it with unanimous consent. Go down to consent agenda. Anything to take out? To review? To look at or questions?
We no comments, I'll move to accept.
Banned by Lerway to accept the consent agenda, is there a second? Executed by Cuni? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries. Reports and presentations? I have nothing, it's been a pretty cool summer so far.
Did you wanna mention Wall of Honor?
Oh, gosh, I forgot about that, yes. There is, with the... How often do we do it?
We don't really have a set. You know, we went eight years between the last one, it's been two years since we did it last.
Yeah. So we, every few years, we review who has served the community and stuff and put them up as a honorary person for the Wall of Honor. Charlie Keel has been a part of this organization since about 2002. I believe. A year before me. So, um, and he's served on all kinds of different committees, as well as the council and just been on the planning commission, he's done just about every job. So, um, that would be someone to consider for the Wall of Honor. I think.
Great.
So, that's something to think about, we can have a formal declaration at the next meeting. But, uh, think about it, if there's anyone else you guys can think of. Like to know also. Okay? Uh, other than that? Okay, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, good afternoon, wherever you are. You Adams touch base on, uh, had a call this morning with Rich Odell from Central Asphalt. We're gonna move around the paving on the Clubhouse Drive project. Um, Nellie has completed all of the base rehab work that needs to be done on the project for the most part. Um, Central is going to come in on Friday of this week and patch those areas that right now are just gravel. Um, due to some weather issues. They're then gonna come back on September thirteenth and potentially fourteenth to Mill. That's Friday, maybe even the Saturday. Um. Their guy thinks he can do it all on a one day, uh, eh.
And he pushes.
That's pushing it. Um, and then they will be paving Monday and Tuesday, which will be like the sixteenth and seventeenth, I think, of September. Um, doesn't really impact us a whole lot, especially once we get those areas patched. Um, you know, so that would be where we're looking at on that project. We do have it complete by September thirtieth because it is an M.D.A. grant and that is the state's fiscal year September thirtieth. Uh, they are aware of that. Um. We, um, also, while everyone was out, had them cut off a spot on Queensway that we're gonna get patched as well. So, right where Queensway makes the, the sharp ninety degree. After you get past the Questa and Torcida would go straight. On the last winter or two, there's been a substantial depression that has formed in there. Um, this is not uncommon, we've seen it probably two or three other locations in the village and typically it's, um, an area where our forefathers buried stumps. And burned them and then built a road over top of them. Um, so, we've got that area cut open right now, we're gonna patch that on Friday as well. Um. But, you know. While they're here, it's cheaper to do it than to try and do it another time. And then we are working on doing the traffic markings, um, you know, on our own, that wasn't part of the grant project mainly because uh, with the relationship that we have with our contractor, it is substantially cheaper than to include in a, an M.D.A. bid packet that way, so. Uh, I guess some building maintenance coming up, um, you may have noticed we have a light pole again. Um, we lost the old one during a windstorm earlier this year. Uh, we are going to have the people that painted the building four or five years ago come out later this month, right in September, and touch up a lot of the, the fascia, the peeling away, that kind of stuff. The, the building itself, for the most part, the paint is pulled up pretty wood, but that fascia, uh, the drip line there is pretty bad. Um, we're also gonna work on a project this fall. Um. The area where we yanked some bushes out here by the handicap parking spot, um, we are looking to build a little library that explained anything about there. Um, so. Uh, we mailed out an RFP to seven, eight firms to do our standby generator project at the DPW building, those bids were due back on September sixth. Um, that is included in the budget this year, um, to do the natural gas generator for that building. I hit everybody local and it's up on our website. Um. We've had a couple of people from Saginaw who actually reached out, so people obviously use our, our website or get notified when that happens. I have not heard back from Frequent Fireworks on, uh, any feedback regarding a fireworks alternative location and if you know, they have any suggestions, but just based on the, the rule as I have always understood it is for every inch diameter shell, you should be seventy feet away from people and structures. Um, you know. This looking like the lake is the only place that this is gonna work. Um, we spaced out the airport as an alternative and we can't get more than about three hundred and fifty feet away from a building there, so that um, you know, that caps it seven inch shells there and we've done eights, we've done tens, we've done twelves before. Um. You know, but we'll see what they say and hopefully go from there. Plan Commission met last Tuesday, they approved two special land use, uh, both were the group daycares. Um, one needs to finish her fencing in her backyard before we sign off on a zoning approval for her, but both of those are um, gone through the process and, um, had no negative feedback from the community during the public hearing. For those of you who haven't heard, the Isabella County Board of Commissioners will be placing a public safety millage on the November ballot at one point four five mils. Um. This is where they came in and after a lot of work with the sheriff. Um, but I haven't seen the exact ballot language, but I know it's worded in a way that it's, it's more encompassing than just road patrols. And I believe they did that so they can hopefully get votes out of the city in this process. Uh, this room here on Thursday at five will be hosting the Isabella County Board of Public Works. Um, both myself and President Pro Temple Lerway serve on that board for the county. Um, we've offered our building multiple times in the past and they've met here, uh, once before during COVID. Um, but they're gonna meet out here because I don't believe the county has a space available and um, another one of the members lives out here, uh, um, Bob Campbell, who's on track to be your next county commissioner. So, you know, three of the five members of the committee live here, you know, a little less sway to make it happen here. Um, myself and Councilman Behrger will be at the MML convention the second week of September. And I'm going to punt over to Jessica and she can brief you guys on a meeting she had with County Commissioner Embry and Jowlinowski about the tax billing that happened this year and what the real feedback was from people who lived through that process.
So I met with them, um, and I feel like they really listened, uh, they were they said many times that, you know, slowly the role is being they're starting to see exactly what the company they hired is doing and not doing, but the, that they're starting to receive from other treasurers and clerks and assessors throughout the community. They asked me to get a list of issues that everybody had ran into and then come up with some solutions for them. I also brought up a few ideas that they're really interested in. One of them being a liaison, if you will, in the treasurer's office who probably would still be an employee, just an employee they have that could be cross-trained to, so that there's one person that knows what forms need to go where and what time. Um, once I get my list of issues and resolutions and suggestions put together, I'm gonna send it back to them and then there's gonna be a meeting, an in-person meeting with Nicole, a couple of the commissioners, the equalization company and then some treasurers out in the community, plus myself and some assessors, uh, so that we can get this hopefully resolved before winter. Um, my biggest suggestion to them was it needed to be smaller in-person meetings, there's a lot of people who are not computer savvy, you know, they don't, they do this twice a year. Um, and a lot of this was hand-fed through equalization to them all these years, so to throw them all in a room, there had to have been about forty of us maybe all in a room with a screen about that size behind you with somebody talking to them, eh, you know, it was really hard for a lot of people to understand and nobody walked out of that meeting knowing how to print their tax bills or with their tax bills printed as it was presented to us, so uh, my suggestion was before winter, they should have some smaller ones, they should also look at other counties that operate this way and ask if they would be willing come in and maybe do the training because the S and A, although it's a great company, none of their departments talk to each other, so if there was an assessing issue that, that collided with a tax issue and you talk to both departments, you'd get two different answers because they don't even though they're supposed to work together, they don't. Whereas if you had a county that's already doing this and their, their township and village and city treasurers have already completed this whole process and you know, we could learn a lot from them and they would probably be able to give us a more of an insight and easier tricks of the trade, if you will, on how to proceed, so that's what we're at.
So you don't wanna do this again?
It would be really nice to have something written for everybody.
Yeah.
Uh, because, you know, we didn't, we don't even have written instructions and it's all out of memory.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah. Under score that. Any questions for Tim? Was that it, Tim?
Yes, that's it.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll go to, uh, Sherman Township report. You should agree.
I'm, I'll build off of what Jessica just said as for people learning new stuff too in our meeting last night. Um, Denise has never really done the L forty twenty-nine forms that are required every year because they were always done by rehabilitation. So, since that doesn't exist right now, I'd be working with Denise and all who have done and has done that stuff in the past, so I know Tim and Jessica have done it here for years. But that's still something that even Denise Livermore is learning how to do. So it's nice to have the experts around to help out with some of that stuff. Um, Tim had mentioned about the one point four or five mils, I won't go on on that one. Um, the library, which I had told you guys in the past, got a four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant to expand and build a building for the library here in, in, uh, Wademan. They have finally narrowed down and got a project manager that they're going to offer the contract to. There's hope that if everything goes nice and smooth, that they would be breaking ground next time, or next April twenty twenty-five, sometime or another. I hesitate, I think it's gonna take a little longer than that, but we've not met with the project manager and a lot of the okay's for doing that have to come from the Sherman Township board, since it's actually a Sherman Township building that's owned that way, so, but we'll deal with the input of the library. Um, Shirley Thompson, some of those guys too, as to what they want to do, so. So, maybe April twenty twenty-five, I think it'll be a little bit later than that, starting breaking ground on it, but the idea right now is to build on quite a huge for lack of a better word, pole barn, but it's not gonna be a pole barn, with some offices in there and some, um, expansion of the library itself, some digital archiving, a lot of, uh, community rooms where people can go and have meetings and the community can come in and, and use those rooms, that kind of stuff too, but as more of the plans come up and get finalized, I'll, I'll let you guys know from there, so. Um, the Nottawa Sherman Fire Farm, we had fifty-one runs last month. Um, they're also now getting grants and getting money, the volunteer firemen are going to go through some training for rope rescuing, and the reason that they're doing that is because of the grain bin fatality we had earlier this year, where somebody was in a grain bin and didn't make it out after getting in there, so they're gonna go through some training to help them know better next time, hopefully next time, but if it happens again, they'll have the training for that part done. Uh, and then, um, I don't know if you guys, if anybody went and actually voted in Sherman Township in August, but we got two new voting booths that were used for the first time here, we could try to get feedback from anybody who might have used them, if they liked them or not, but from what we've heard already, a lot of people liked them, um, so we're looking to order two more of those to try to make the uh, area where you vote and stuff like that more compact and easier to, to do more people at one time instead of sitting down at the big long cables and doing that stuff, so. And then lastly, um, Denise actually did her own public testing for the ballots and all that stuff this year, ended up saving us twenty-one hundred dollars by not having to pay election terms to come in and do that stuff. Um, she informed Mindy that she was gonna do it on her own, whether Mindy liked it or not, so. But, um, I think that's something that we're gonna continue to do for sure in Sherman Township, people save us at least twenty-one hundred dollars or more per, per election. Um, but I think right now there's also some other townships are gonna try to do it well for the November election too. So trying to save some money that way, so. And that's all hit.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim. L.I.P.O.A., is anything from the L.I.P.O.A., Tim?
No.
Okay. Have no public hearings, public comment, this is the portion for public comment.
There is some.
Seeing none, we'll go on to existing business. Backyard chickens and beekeeping discussion. Okay. Pick who wins, Mr. Manager?
Your, for seven business under existing business is basically discussion and direction on what, if anything, would like, uh, myself or myself and the Plan Commission to pursue concerning any potential ordinance, amendments, modifications to allow either or or both backyard chickens or bee colonies. Um, we conducted a survey earlier this year, had two hundred and twenty-eight, twenty-nine responses. Um. In a general sense, they came in pretty much uniformly. Two-thirds of the people were, would be okay with it under some or no conditions and a third of the people were opposed to both. Um. Concerns on the chickens were, you know, cleanliness, location, uh, proximity to neighbors, um, not getting off property roosters, um. We tried to do a follow-up in our master plan survey, but we did not have a spectacular response to that effort, so I didn't include that data because it was like forty-five people on or under that part of the survey, so. Uh, working off the survey from earlier in the year, um, I think you've got a decent barometer, this is obviously not perfect, but they give you some direction, um, but more importantly, your own eyes, ears with your neighbors and you seeing your neighborhood is, is equally as important to what we've got going on here. Um, with that, I will turn it back over and answer any questions you have. Um, one of the, uh, graphs on here was, uh, and I, I remember this, um, was just a blatant, are you for or against chickens? Uh-huh. Um. You know, and sixty-plus percent of people said no on that, and then there was a follow-up question that asked how comfortable we were with having it in the community and, and that's the numbers that you did. The other graph that's on here that's part of that. Am I mistaken there?
No, I think we're in the packet. I thought that that first one says am I?
Oh, I'm interested in my.
On my property.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah. The second one was the correct.
Yeah.
How comfortable are you with it? So, yeah, there's a lot of people don't wanna do it. But that yeah, and.
Well, based on what Tim just said, it was basically two to one.
Yeah.
Two-thirds, four and one-third against it. It's gonna rely very heavily on new areas. Certain areas are not gonna want it.
Right. This almost goes back to the, what we had talked about a few, you know, s- over the years, Tim, about different areas. Zoning different areas with different things.
Correct.
Like urban rural urban.
Yeah. You know. Yep. And we, we did that a little bit in twenty-two with our zoning map where we took the residential districts in particular and went from three to six, you know? Oh, is there any structure or groundwork in place or having been discussed prior to my knowledge of this, uh? You know, I, I know it's been talked about before, I've heard, so. Um, as far as like, you know, yard size and stuff like that, you know, as far as, we've covered a lot of that, I would know. Oh, yeah, Plan Commission a decade ago.
Oh, yeah.
Draft regulations and that was back in the packet when we first got into this in, I don't know, April or May, you know, that this was where that discussion had kind of blossomed, you know?
Get that, get that better recently.
Correct, yeah.
Is there going to be any uh, red flags or issues coming up that we do pursue becoming the city?
No.
Mount Pleasant allows chickens. Not that it's ethical, yeah.
We allow them unless somebody complains.
Well, yeah, I understand that, but, you know, right, in Mount Pleasant, I, someone just said, told me today actually that they, this ordinance does allow chickens, it's actually official. Something.
Well, I we're gonna have to look at if, if we do go down there, we're, we're gonna have to look at areas permits highly regulated.
How many stores they would have. Yeah, that, that's kinda what I was talking about, it's like, you know, how much property you have versus how many birds you're allowed to have and that and how close the coops are gonna be to the neighbors, so there's less we do since the people that aren't, aren't participating in this, so.
I think that the versus the chicken, the bees seems like a lot easier with than so. Because, I mean, the pollinators were a very positive impact on especially nature. And there's only a very small even like, it looks like the majority of people were fine with it. But, oh, it's a, it's a very small hobby, so I don't think you would have as much issue with it as you would with the chicken, but with the chickens. Um, especially because we don't really have an animal control. You know, like chickens are prey animals, that would be my concern, stray cats, dogs.
Ios.
Ios.
I would like the answer, if we didn't do this, that it would be part of the you know, uh.
We had, it's too separate, we're talking about chickens and we're talking.
Right, I know, but as far as the chickens being preyable, I, I would, I would hope that part of the zoning would mandate that they have to be you know, fenced, cooped or fenced, just so that we don't have yard birds. Then animal, there will be an issue with stray dogs or whatnot.
There's eagles.
Oh, yeah.
There's, um, yeah, it's, I mean, I think the chicken is much more a deeper dive than.
I think, I think the noise factor and possibly the, uh, you know, the, the smell of animals would be more of an issue than that though, as far as on a daily basis for us, uh, you know.
Yeah.
I think. We've got I don't know, what, four or five people? Right? Chickens now?
I don't know, I think.
Do we have any complaints? At all about, about them?
We've had complaints in the past when people had roosters.
Roosters, you're right, I can understand that.
But besides roosters, no, we've not had any complaints.
It's not house with something in their garage.
And that person had ducks and all kinds of other stuff too.
Yeah, I just think like the bees is separating them out, like it's apples and oranges.
Oh, yeah, the bee, the bees I, I wouldn't like either, but it, it seems to me that the, uh, the backyard chicken thing is something that's last couple of years has been growing.
Oh, it's.
I think it will continue to grow.
It is.
And I don't think it's fair to tell people. No, I mean, we tell them no, but you have to meet these conditions.
Well, I mean, I just tell people don't hug him because they're chicken. Oh, right. You got all sorts of they're covered and stuff, but um. Yeah, the chickens, I think, I don't know, it's just how much who's liable for it? Like what happens?
I personally don't have an issue with chickens. Uh, but I think if we do allow them, I agree, we need some sort of rules that are easy to follow that therefore, uh, reduce the impact on neighbors. If that's possible. Apparently it is.
You're not allowed to, I mean, there's, like, if you're not allowed to sell the eggs, then I would think like they starting as very small blocks.
Interesting.
Would be probably the easiest.
Why would they not be allowed to sell the eggs?
Well, there was a question on.
Right.
About it.
It's a matter of traffic.
Well, that, you, you, at least if you're not supposed to, from my understanding now.
When people sell egg departments that are.
I, I know they do, but they were selling fresh milk and stuff, like, you know, you're not supposed to be able to do that.
I mean, a chicken only lays so many eggs and as far as the survey I don't see the it's like green, blue, yellow and teal, but there's no, like I don't see any, what, what each one means. But like.
It's on the bottom.
There's no sale of chicken and eggs, like it's a big yellow, which I guess it says not important, but um. I mean, I would probably, if if you wanna try it, I would, I would, I would limit to a very small block.
I think you have to limit, I think you have to limit it to size that they have available. Distance from neighbors. Distance from the lake. Because there's not a lot of lakefront houses that you wouldn't see the chicken coop.
Yeah.
Cause it can't be on the lakefront. Shouldn't be probably. If it's in the, what we'd call the backyard, if you're, live on a lake, which is the roadside, it's gonna be there. There's not much, I mean, you have to kind of restrict where they're put because I don't see Charlie Keel being able to put one at his house, for example.
All the issues that we, we need to cover in the, in the.
Right. That's what I mean when we consider this.
Remember that our village is not just well, how.
Oh, I agree.
You gotta go by where we live.
I'm just saying where the pushback is going to come from. That's what I'm thinking.
Sounds like it's a zone.
Right, it has, it has to be certain zoned areas.
Because, um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Heavenly permitted.
I mean, limit.
Zone areas.
Oh, yeah.
And then people don't live in that zone. Hopefully they're the ones that said no.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, I just, I don't know, I just worry about with like the dogs that watch and there's a lot of stray cats. And I, you know, we have three bald eagles that hang out in our place.
Yep, well, that, that would be the, the chicken's responsibility.
Like what would be?
Their, their secure.
Or the chicken. You're responsible for your animal's safety and whatever about them, and then as far as like removal of waste, you know. I don't think you can compost any of that or like what, I don't know. Can you put it in the trash?
Yeah, I mean.
Like hay and straw and all that that goes.
All that, I know.
I know, you, cause.
Can't burn it.
You can't, you can't burn it. You have to dispose of it. And you have to.
I mean, a business, but.
There's no grass pickups and I don't think we wanna just guard it back there at the DPW building.
I mean, it's notable that concerns the community wants it, and I'm not opposed to it, but I just, like I said, I do feel it needs to be heavily regulated. You know, to make sure that the people doing it understand their responsibility. Well, also to protect the, the neighboring properties that don't wanna have chickens, you know, there should be, like I said, some sort of setback away from um, you know, with the, the coops and stuff have to be a certain.
You could have a community garden area and a community cooping.
All right, Tim, we're gonna use a certain number of chickens now too, buddy.
This is kind of one, this is kind of two.
You know, on a recent trip to Arkansas, my kids enjoy Chick-fil-A, Raising Canes and Zaxby's, I can find home.
You know, on a recent trip to Arkansas, my kids enjoy Chick-fil-A, Raising Cane's and Zaxby's, I can find homes for chickens pretty easy.
Yeah, man.
We had KFC yesterday.
Raising Cane.
Regulated and permitted, absolutely, and bees, no, other than that, I can't find a problem.
Okay, are we done with chickens? Are we talking about bees now?
They go together.
Well, I know, but we were just talking about chickens, I thought, to start with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you have questioned about bees.
Well, I don't see a problem with bees, there are bee, there are beehives at the Children's Museum in Mount Pleasant. In seven years, they've had one bite, you know why? Cause he said, well, I just wanna pick it up. Other than that, no one has been injured and they're out and about, the kids are out and about around them all the time.
At the hunt camp, I, excuse me, my brother will allow bees out there. At first, I didn't like it at all, they never bothered me and I had a blind right near them, they never bothered me a bit.
That's right.
Now, that's a buddy champ, that's not.
That's still, you didn't get.
Yeah, they they typically don't, I've been around a lot of people who have bees, unless you're like chewing them and, you know, unless you're being aggressive and. I can share that my in-laws have colonies of bees in. Everything you've said has been true except for the colony that they got this year that was relocated from. Somewhere someone had, you know, found it in their wall or whatever and, um, you couldn't go near that one without them getting ordering.
Right.
So they got moved somewhere, they didn't want to, that's basically.
That was basically, yeah, but.
Yeah, once, once they reacclimated wherever, they'd probably be fine, yeah.
Yeah, but it it took them a while to relocate from where those bees were dropped to where they ended up under property.
Yeah.
That would take me off, too.
Yeah. Okay, so where we're at with this is. What, what does the council want to do? Should we look at some regulations from others, other places like Mount Pleasant must have regulations?
Mount Pleasant cities.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Of this.
I think we definitely have to look at, yeah, which might be.
Get some ideas and.
We're gonna have regulations and permits, and we're gonna put it in regulations and. Not reinvent the wheel, just steal it from somebody else.
Right.
Is there a step process where you would shoot trial areas and then expand upon that, or would it just be? If you liked what someone else did, it would just encompass the entire, like, it would just take over everything?
Like, yeah, we have to look at it and then we'll have to, uh, probably form a committee to work on it. To to bring it to the planning commission, I would assume. That depends on how you want to regulate it, that's why I covered in my, my cover memo is.
Yeah.
There. There's two forks in the road, there's the planning commission approach, so you regulate it through zoning. Um, you know, that has. The negative side effect that once you allow it, it would be grandfathered if you decided to.
Try to change it.
Recede it. Um. There's the, the other approach, which is do it through your animal control ordinance. Um, probably the the least. Enjoyable aspect of that is it puts the wordsmith thing of the document at your guys' die as to work through as opposed to. Getting something that's been worked through by planning condition. Cause it wouldn't be a zoning ordinance, it'd be a police department, it's being section six oh two of the ordinance book.
And that allows us more, more.
And either way, the zoning order has to be amended anyway, cause it says in there that you can't have.
Right.
This, but whether that's a simple, we we change one section or we change one section and then add a whole bunch to it, you know, that. That governs that process.
Well, the problem, though, is. If you're lakeside. Can you really have, unless you have a deep. Lot, like, use me, for example, if I wanted to have bees, okay? My lot isn't that big.
So the basic premise would be that you don't get to have them. I would maybe, but you could not, because, yeah.
I'm I'm thinking lakefront might be a problem unless you had a deep lot and then a deep lot that takes care of it, but. Like where mine places, I don't see chickens or bees.
Yeah.
Because I think.
We'll have to back to have a certain setback.
Right.
Fall into the neighborhood.
Right.
You know, that would, that 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 itself would kind of mandate the side of properties like that, that would end up. Be able to do it.
Yes, yes.
Sounds like a lot of hassle, a lot of work for. A dozen eggs, I mean.
We're not gonna get.
Not a couple dozen eggs, a couple dozen residents.
Yeah, people already don't take care of their dogs. You know, like, people don't take care of their dogs, what happens when dogs start killing chickens? These dogs aren't on leashes, they're running wild, we already have a dog problem, let's make the dog problem worse and let's let chickens roam.
Well, if the dogs eat enough chickens, they'll fatten up and slow down.
Maybe they'll choke. I know, it's just, it just sounds like a recipe for fights, it sounds like residents are gonna be. Neighbors are gonna be yelling at each other, they're gonna call Tim and yell, it's gonna be a code enforcement nightmare. Then I agree.
I think that, I will bet there will be fewer than a dozen collectively that do anything with either one of these.
I mean, in the current, in with the current situation. Like, if someone had to do chickens, they more or less can, if I'm, I'm misunderstanding.
They more or less are.
Are, well, right. Because there's nothing, well, we do have a couple of cities, you're not supposed to have chickens in somebody currently.
I mean, if you got the dog. At large under control, then maybe the chickens would be something easier to discuss.
Yeah.
But that's something that is not, yeah, immediate. That we can. Um, cause the bees, I don't know, that's. To me, like, I mean, it's a bee colony, they kinda. Dissipate, you know, like, what do you really, you don't need like acreage for a bee, you just need an area where they can go into the woods or wherever.
The only problem I see with it is if.
But you're only gonna have a small interest.
Yeah. Yeah, the only problem I could see coming well from that is if somebody has a heavily flowered yard and they are, they are out there, people have, you know. Um, and somebody, you know, two doors down has bees. The bees are constantly gonna go to their yard and if they have any kind of allergies or have little kids, you know, I can see somebody complaining at that point. That all these bees are coming to my yard and they're going there to get flowers, you know, nectar, that's what they do.
Well, I plant pollinator seeds to the tree.
Me, too.
You're trying to affect wild bees, you're not, you're not, you know, you're.
Any bee that lives in neighborhood, I see.
I know they're honey eye buying stuff.
But, yeah, you're not gonna get nearly as many as if somebody has three or four.
I don't know how the dynamics work at that, you know, I mean, and we have a lot of farmland, how far do they go? Do they go out there?
Well, they go as short a period as they have to, they they can drive the trouble up mi- up to miles if they have to.
At this point, why don't you get some, uh, regulations and other, uh, the other places you're using. It sounds reasonable. Very, thank you. That'll give us an idea of any problems that we might be good to do as well. We need more information right now if we ask you, and that'd be the best way to get it.
Yep. Okay.
Is it naive to think that if you make an ordinance regarding chickens and bees, people might just follow them?
Yeah.
I mean, well, I know, but I'm just saying, we we approach this from a negative point of view. I like to approach it from a positive, which is, we think this is good for the community and we think people will trust and do the right thing. As opposed to, well, they'll do the this and this and this, I don't like that. I don't think that's the way we're supposed to work.
Well, as you said, we got four or five people with chickens and they're not supposed to have them right now.
I know, I know.
What makes you think they're gonna follow the rules if we put more rules in place?
Right, and they're, yeah.
It's gonna be like, people, people are gonna learn how to turn their cars backwards so you can't see their license.
I can say, we've not seen chickens at these places that are reported to have them.
I understand.
Right.
What happens when people have the chickens living in their house?
You know, you know, I got two left doors living in my house, each turn a bread.
I have a neighbor that that's had chickens and there's never been a problem. They don't even leave his yard, they run all over, they never, never even leave it. And he's got a, like a chicken coop in the back of his yard, where do they go? And he, I've never heard a complaint from him, from what he's doing. So at this point, I'd like to see, get some regulations and see what we're looking at.
Okay. Well, let's do that then, Tim, let's get some info on that from other communities, see what they have. Problems they've had, I'm sure that. In a discussion with some managers, we could probably find that out. In a ten minute phone call. Or protest.
Yeah, yeah.
No, God, no, we don't allow check.
Love it.
Okay, so, let's go on to then. Jedi new business nine. Traffic control.
Um, at last month's meeting, I floated the idea of reaching out to our residents on Clubhouse Drive between Burdie Drive and Fairway Drive to get your feedback on two questions. Uh, since we are resurfacing that road, it would be an opportune time to look at potentially lowering the speed limit from thirty to twenty five. And if we do that, um, potentially, do we wanna get rid of the double yellow line? Um, it is a major street, so we do have to maintain a ten foot way, way, lane width, so. The very least, you need to have, uh, two white lines twenty feet apart, um. The feedback, we have another one coming today via email that was supportive of the speed limit reduction, but not of getting rid of all of the markings. Uh, and that's generally the feedback that we've had is the speed limit change is is. Is desired from eight or nine people that we've heard from. Most are indifferent or opposed to getting rid of the traffic markings and the concerns that they shared, um. Walking, biking, and especially the curb area up here behind, behind the office here. Um, you know, they they feel that they need that delineation for protection for on their route, walking, biking and. Not driving into people's yards at the the curve, which is happened before. So, I prepared two traffic control orders, if you wanted to act on one or both of these, the first one would be the speed limit reduction. And the second one will be the traffic markings and that one, I kind of gave you two options would be, you know, no, no yellow or. You know, a a skipped yellow, that way you still maintain the. The delineation of the two lanes and keep M D happy, but, um, you know, you get rid of the double yellow. So.
How wide is the pavement there, side to side? It can't be much more than.
Twenty two feet in most areas, can it take?
Things are four inches and if you got a double yellow, that's a foot on the middle.
Yeah.
It's two feet, you know, I mean, it's.
So the white line's right on the edge. Yeah, that's pretty close.
And I know, like, research shows whatever makes a road look smaller, when these people drive slower.
Right.
I, I can't agree with that because coming down the street. There are so many people, they're doing fifty, sixty miles an hour, I'm not kidding you.
Yeah, well, that's com- that's. They're concerned, but I mean, psychologically, logically.
Yeah.
That's what happens to happen, like, I mean, I know a lot of people, like, I get mad at them too, cause my kids are on their scooters, they'll slow down when they see like a little guy. But, uh, you know, it's just you. When you 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 come in on that kind of rural area of clubhouse to suddenly the curb and then it's. Residential and there'll be like ten walkers. You know, so, um, I guess if any way you can make it.
Right.
Look. Better, I don't know, the speed limit reduction is a good idea.
From going to thirty to twenty five, people don't agree with the twenty five, I mean, with the thirty, they they. I have not seen anybody do twenty five. I speak.
What was the average on El Camino, Tim, when we did the speed? Wasn't it like forty five or fifty?
Forty three.
Forty three? That's thirty. Yeah.
It was, it was incredible.
And and I thought about putting the the counter out to get some more data on that section of clubhouse, which we we don't have, but. With construction going on, it wouldn't have been reliable data because you've got altered traffic patterns and speeds, cause people are going around stuff. Um. You know, this section of clubhouse here, just going from memory, I could be wrong. Um, when the golf course is not in operation, the winner is only seeing two hundred and seventy-ish, three hundred cars a day. Um, during golfing season, it it bumps up to about seven hundred. Um, so I would, I would think that. Three hundred number is pretty decent for that section of clubhouse, um, probably a little bit less, maybe two fifty. Um, Burdie Drive was seven seventy-ish. But a, you know, decent number of those turn and go south, you know, some are going north, obviously, but. Um. You know, it is not a high traffic area, but, you know, it's no El Camino, and that was. When this got discussed in planning mission, when I met your report. You know, they asked about that, and you know, this is an area that is very different in terms of its character than the rest of our major street network. This is a lot more fairway drive than El Camino Grande, you know, in terms of density and that kind of stuff and, um. You know, it is a major street, so there are certain standards of them that we do have to maintain, um, but. That's, that's it kind of in a nutshell.
I know that they probably won't. But if the average is only seven over on El Camino, I can't help saying that. Lowering it to twenty five may take some of those people down from where they are to a lower speed, but.
I know.
I'll go along with whatever, uh, the twenty five or the, even at thirty or twenty five, and the painting I wanted it off, but. You know what, I can, I can.
Yeah.
Be careless now, you know. If if you think the the painting in that.
Mine, the white lines are important.
Yeah.
The 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 stripes are single or double, I don't think that really. You know, that's just, I feel like that's a personal question, it's more like the whole line, but that's. Even though it's tight anyways, but I know, I mean, a lot of our kids are around, so.
We definitely have a lot more kids.
Yeah.
Definitely have more kids.
Like.
And then it's good.
One thing about putting ourselves in a better position, too, if it is twenty five and fourteen and unfortunate incident happens. You break them off.
Yeah.
And no recourse.
Right.
This is what it is. Well, I mean, lowering it, you know, I mean, trying not to come from the negative aspect of it. There are, you know, there are just as many, if not more, law-abiding citizens as there are people that are. So in lowering the speed limit, there are going to be a lot of the traffic that goes through, they're gonna slow down and fall as opposed to the speed limit. The people that are speeding don't care, they're gonna continue to speed.
Good point.
Best of, you know, best of luck with that is that that will slow them down a little bit because they don't want to be going too fast over the speed limit, as you said. So, I mean, I think overall, I mean, it's 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 a, it's a win-win. Um. You know, there are obviously going to be people that, you know, will speed and stuff through there still, that's that's a given, they're just, you know. But overall, it will have a, a good impact as far as slowing traffic down. Focus in there and, you know. Right, that's my.
Well, they're changing the thing on, on, uh, being a main road, you know, by changing. Striping or no striping.
The striping. The striping, but, um, mainly because you do have to delineate, you know, you have to maintain two ten foot lane widths, so, um.
Anything to take away from the main street, I wouldn't want to.
Yeah, well, that would be, let's let's deal with the first one, the first one, let's let's go with the twenty five or speech, cause there's two different. Yeah, two different things. Um, and we can just, I wanna discuss that, too. So, um, what's the pleasure of the council? I'll make a motion to reduce the speed limit to twenty five mile an hour through that section of.
I'll do that, kind of.
Motion made by Latte to decrease the speed limit to twenty five miles an hour, seconded by Laraway. Is there any further discussion, questions?
I think it's a great idea. People I've talked to that live on that road fully support it, too, you know, they have kids, I mean. Like you said, if you slow them down even five miles an hour, it's doing something, yeah.
Okay, so, roll call, please.
Joe Latte.
Yes.
Uh, yes, okay, Dave Ferguson.
Yes.
Paul Cuny.
Yes.
Gary Berenjut.
Yes.
Carol Shannon, yes. Ray Peedy.
Yes.
Robert Laraway.
Yes.
There.
And Carol's unanimously. Okay. Now, go on to the second one. The stripes. So, the requirement by the state to keep the cla- the classification as a major road is you have to have two ten foot lanes.
Yes.
And we think that the sideline striping. Because it still has another twenty one feet then. Would would maintain that without. Would would maintain that without those striped on the middle.
But you you do two lines twenty feet apart, essentially.
Okay.
You do one on each side.
Got it.
Um, you know, in a perfect world, I would, I would move them into eighteen feet, give me two nines, that would further. Do that traffic calming, but you can't get away with that and maintain your F fifty-one funding for major street, which is substantial.
So we can either do that, the fog lines, the white ones. Only. Or we can do the fog lines and the two stripes. Or we can do. The fog lines and a single. What do you do?
Dot.
Dash it, yeah.
Dash it.
Dash it. Dash it. And there's currently the two.
All of our majors are double yellow.
Okay.
Do you think that by changing it from two yellows? That we might have a problem?
We would have a problem if we didn't do a yellow, I think.
Well, I'm against it, and and I was pushing him to get rid of the yellow, but I don't want to. We'll change it to.
Yeah. What would be the, what would be the gain in taking the old line away?
It's more. You know, having the. The four lines, there are the two yellow, two white, you know, it it gives that hype impression, it's like you're seeing out on your county roads, you know, where if you go on. Fairway or Cordova, you know, you got just blacked out, you know?
See, that's why I was thinking now, it takes away from. Man, go and then. That takes away some funding for to go down.
Yeah, that's. And I had to dig to find that, because the state no longer puts this on their website, but there is an M dot publication called Uniform Criteria for Major Street that. We copied a nineteen ninety-seven version when they still mailed it out.
Yeah. Yeah, I I I think for safety sake, as as much as it might seem ignorant, that we should at least have a a dad.
Yeah.
Differentiate the two lanes.
You think?
You know.
A dash line versus the single line, do you think that you recognize your speed more with a dashed line increasing?
Well, I mean, if you're not looking at the speedometer, yes, that doesn't make.
Because a lot of people are just striped.
But then do you get the, I'm sorry. Go, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. But I'm just wondering if a single dashed line would. Just kind of the help be a natural trigger to, if you're coming in hot.
Yeah.
It's like, oh.
It's a passing zone. And let me back. You start passing people.
And and that's, and that's the feedback I I worry that you would get is, okay, you lower the speed limit, but you make the passing zone, you know?
Exactly.
If we didn't have that on El Camino, I mean, I guarantee people are passing.
They still have it on.
Yeah.
Queens, by a hundred percent.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Oh, yeah.
I've been passed.
Yeah.
Anything about the dotted lines is because if there are golf carts or something like that going. It 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 allows you legally to cross that line over the other lane to get around them.
I think the, I think the double yellow confines traffic to a lane.
Yes, because because legally you were not supposed to cross a solid yellow line in the center of traffic. Regardless of whether there's obstruction in front of you, you know, and that's why, that's why I said the, you know, the dashed line. So that people have the capability. Now you are gonna get those occasionally, ah, who's like, all right, we can pass. Probably the same people are still gonna do thirty-five mile an hour or twenty-five mile an hour zone. Yeah, oh, I mean, uh. It's hard to say, but I think the majority of people would recognize that that just differentiates lanes and allows you to go around. A car parked out of yard sale or a golf cart or.
So the white lines, regardless if there's a a single, double or none.
They're twenty feet apart.
Twenty feet.
Yep.
Regardless. If it's not from yellows and white, has to be ten feet, and from yellow to white, it's ten.
Yes, if you put the yellow.
Yeah.
If you press the yellow.
White yellows are white.
Yeah.
Then it's ten, ten. So then you eat away at whatever little area. Because those lines are.
When we initially did, when we initially did the major streets, we did not do the white lines. So when everything got paved in two thousand and three, it was just the double yellow. We came back in, um. When I got here in two thousand and six, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Was when we added the white lines, if you remember that. We had a lot of people that are saying, hey, you know. I can't see well at night, and I would really like to look at the shoulder as opposed to the yellow line to maintain my my lane, and I don't want to drive into traffic, so. You know, we we added that um, to the street network at that time, and. Um, you know, when we we stripe every year. You know, it's it's half the cost, you know, if it's twelve grand to do it, it's six grand to do white, six grand to do yellow, it's the same linear footage. So.
So. Quick question on the twenty-five foot, what? I've seen sometimes where they change. The speed limit, and then they'll put one of those. Radar tickers for a while to. Alert people to the change speed limit for like weeks, a couple of weeks after they update it. Be like, whatever speed you're coming at, it just stays there. Is that something that a community does, or is that something that they do when you change?
We did, no, he's priced them all.
We, oh, yeah, we priced them all.
First, oh, I've seen.
Oh, yeah. I wanted to buy one, he said, no.
Having a false camera over top with a new speed limit sign would have a significant.
They're a lot of coppers, but.
Not the false ones.
Let's see here.
With holes on the white.
Just pulling up the first search result, um. To do a solar powered one of those is thirty-four hundred dollars, which is about three thousand last time I brought it up to you guys. That's on the inside. Oh, traffic logic.
Wondering too, if the, if you go with a. Double yellow. That would help the pedestrians. If you didn't, if you went with a. Rather than yellow, because then you could. I know I always hesitate to pull over a double yellow, but I'm old school, so I don't know. But if that would cause you to at least allow not feel bad about, I mean, it's a subtle psychological thing, but maybe the pedestrians, you can give them more room. Without thinking about.
They'll slow down and.
Yeah.
Some people give you a really wide berth, and others are.
And others don't give you a berth at all.
Well, when you have, when they're this tall, then they tend to be a little better.
Yeah, that's like, like I was saying, that's why I like the old dash line, because I'm. People that don't want to break, you know, you know. And who go over to allow for people, golf carts, you know. You on your lawnmower, if you're cruising around the neighborhood, you know?
I'd be happy to get prices out of a sign or a cart and bring it back to you next month. Yeah, let's do that.
I never thought of that, though, you know, the W L line.
I would think you would be able to rent one for a short period, too, with.
I I fall over. You know, I go to the opposite lane.
I do.
To give them a break, you know? Trying to give the walkers a break.
Yeah.
So I go, I go over the old line, in fact, I'm mostly in the other lane. If I see people walking, like there were runners today on Chippewa Hill, the most they had. Bunch of hundred dollars here, because they were.
My college. Turned in one the first day of schooling us through.
Yeah.
For college students.
I thought, yeah, central.
Yeah, so.
You just lay on your horn, they jump off the road quickly, too.
That's their mom.
Imagine you sneak up on that.
Yeah.
We'll just get the overboard, so you guys have like a. Truck.
So what do we want to do with this yellow line and the fog lines? I think the fog lines are fait accompli. I think we're gonna do the fog lines at least. Do we want the double yellow or the dash yellow, or none, no yellow?
Uh, my vote would be all. If we lose something, I don't want to lose anything.
Right, we don't want to lose anything. So now we're deciding.
I think we should minimal of a dash line, but I'm not not opposed to a double line if that's what, you know. Just, just. The more I think about it, I think. Lowering the speed limit. The, doing the skip line would be counterproductive to what you just did, the more the speed limit, because that. That creates, you know, the sense that you've got twenty feet of road to play with as opposed to ten, because you can go over that lane, you know, where. Um, that's right, and the double yellow prevents people from passing, it truly does, right?
I'm only just doing one thing at a time. Yeah, the speed limits.
Well, we already passed that.
I know.
You know, the.
So you're just saying.
Thing, keep it as.
Keep it as it is.
Keep it and.
And then see how it goes.
Yeah.
It's double yellow now, correct?
Correct.
It's currently, so we wouldn't change it.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to double. Minimum need to have a dash, I just.
So if we're gonna keep it double yellow, then we don't have to pass this.
We're not doing anything, yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll keep that in our back pocket.
But we did change it to twenty-five.
To twenty-five miles an hour, yeah. Nope. We did that. You seconded it.
Yes, we already, we already did it.
Guess I was looking to do. Doesn't change.
No. It's good. I already wrote it down.
Okay, thank you. Now let's go on to fire coverage contract, did we get that?
We do not. We've not received a contract yet for this year.
Is that a concern?
I, it is a concern. I brought it up with the fire chief, he said, well, Denise sent those out in April. I talked to Denise, she goes, I, I'm sure I did, I'm like. I don't have it, can you resend it? So I sent her an email reminder, can you resend it? Yep. Haven't got it.
Wish we had a connection.
Yeah, I wish we knew somebody. I mean, they were.
I'm back here now.
Hey, they're out of it, and they sent it.
It's a shame, isn't it?
I'm like, I looked through all my emails, like, nothing from Denise.
Okay. We'll have to push that out to next week or next month.
They've gone firing for them.
Well, I mean, the first payment's not due till October, so they got another month before they.
That's when you'll get it, for sure.
Yeah. No way, we don't have any money.
Okay, Jedi items. Nine, three, cityhood discussion. Cityhood discussion.
Let me see if I've got a clicker still. I'm still a clicker, I guess you're gonna be on. I don't have a clicker, so we're just gonna use the mouse. Look at that. Maybe, maybe.
All right, well, later time.
Ooh, fancy.
Do we change that date whenever we watch?
Whenever.
Okay.
I just thought that was cute to play with. So for those of you who are here for our village charter discussion, you will remember some of the highlights, including. The structure of local government of the state of Michigan. Municipal government in our fair state is divided into three different types of entities, townships, villages, and cities. Townships are broken down into general law townships, which Sherman and Greenfield are. And charter townships, the one you may know locally is our friends over in Union Township. Villages are broken down into either general law villages or home rule villages. You all are residing and living here in a home rule village. In cities, um, are home rule cities, fifth-class cities, which are home rule cities. Fourth-class cities, which are also home rule cities, especially charter cities, which are not home rule cities. Which, there's only one of those left. Carol knew it last time.
Yeah, I told you, I don't remember now.
Back in us.
That's right. Yep.
So the General Law Village Act, um, which most villages in Michigans are incorporated under Public Act three of eighteen ninety-five. The law requires you elect a village president every two years, three trustees every two years to four-year terms, and a clerk and a treasurer every two years. But by two-thirds majority, those can be moved to appointed offices and also not made to be residents of the community. Uh, fun fact, village council public hearings are not required to adopt ordinances in general law villages. They can be disincorporated. And your taxation is capped at twelve and a half mils for general operations, five mils for streets, and two and a half mils for cemeteries. Home rule villages. You have flexibility in the composition of the council. You have flexibility on whether you do require public hearings at the council. You cannot be disincorporated, and you have a maximum of twenty mils. But can be capped in your local charter, where ours is capped at uno.
Uno mil.
Types of cities, fifth-class, fourth-class, home rule. So effective January first of nineteen eighty, all fourth-class cities were deemed to be home rule cities by Public Act three thirty-four of nineteen seventy-six. All cities are required to have a charter. The four, there are four last I checked. Fourth-class cities that have remained under the fourth-class cities act and have not adopted a charter. Is what it is, folks. Uh, fifth-class cities and home rule cities are essentially the same thing with two significant differences. There are population differences for incorporation. And fifth-class cities are mandated to have at-large elections. So home rule cities that are just home rule cities, you can do at-large, district, board, do. Whatever the fine folks determine is best for your community, you're a fifth-class city, you're required to do it at large, which we are right now. All of our council elections are done at large. So this is where the biggest difference comes in between the two. A fifth-class city. Can incorporate if you have at least seven hundred and fifty, but not more than two thousand people. If you are a village incorporating as a fifth-class city, you do not need to meet the population, population density requirement. If you are over two thousand people, you may only incorporate as a home rule city, and you must have at least five hundred people per square mile. This is, as my geology professor in college would say, muy muy importante. Because. Here's our numbers. Our twenty-twenty census, although I think was very bad, one thousand eight hundred twenty-nine residents. We are four and a half square miles. Mile and a quarter, that is water, which unfortunately, you still gotta count people. So we meet the criteria to pursue cityhood as a fourth-class city. If we. Wait till the twenty-thirty census. We may lose our opportunity until twenty forty to pursue cityhood. Because if we go over two thousand people, which I think all of us believe we are. You're gonna need to get up to two thousand two hundred and fifty people to meet that density requirement of five hundred people. For four and a half square miles is twenty-two fifty. So if we come in in a twenty-thirty census number at twenty-one hundred, twenty-one fifty. We're out of luck. We're a village for the next decade, no matter what. So if this is something that the council and the community want to pursue, we've got six years. Before we have to deal with the next census. Yes.
If it's something we did want to pursue, would it be better to do sooner than closer to the six years? So, okay.
What happens when you? Do it, and you're under two thousand, but then you go over, do you have to change your statement or?
Nope. Once you say a fifth-class city. There are three mandated services that cities are required to provide that us fair villages do not deal with. That is assessing and border review. Billing and collecting taxes and then dispersing those back to the appropriate entities. And elections, state, county, school, and federal. Well, how much would that cost us? Nothing in the world is free. Based on our parcel count, most assessors out here work on a cost-per-parcel basis. And at our current parcel count of like twenty-three fifty and fifteen bucks a parcel. Um, you throw in border review and some other costs, you're gonna come in at about forty thousand bucks, is what it would take to do assessing, is what I have been.
That's annual.
That's annually.
Okay.
We already do one billing for taxes. We would need to do a billing in the winter, so that would look like another probably twenty-five hundred dollar increase, just printing a publication, mailing, that kind of stuff. Elections, elections aren't cheap. Um. Especially when you factor in, you know. Early voting. Absentee voting. All that kind of fun stuff. So every two years, you're at least gonna have two elections. And then more like in every four years, that year's gonna have three elections, could be a presidential primary, a state primary, and a general. So in your even years, you're gonna see a significant increase in that election cost, because that's when we go to the state of Michigan. Odd years, those would be special elections, so schools, um, those have to be paid for by the N L D requesting it. Just like we had to pay when they went out to August, so every two years or so, you're gonna see a spike and then a drop, spike and a drop. But we pay for that. Well, our general operating village is capped at one mil and will roll back to just over eight tenths of that. Our residents, because they're residents of their respective township, also pay one mil directly to the townships. If we were to incorporate as a city with a two-mil cap. It would generate an additional a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in revenue to offset the added cost of roughly seventy thousand dollars. to offset the added cost of roughly seventy thousand dollars. That is because our eight tents would go back up to the one, and then we'd add the one from the township. So.
But to give them anything?
Get back.
Okay, sorry.
In addition to that, because you are assessing, billing, collecting, and distributing for other entities, you are actually required to do a one percent admin fee on all of those tax dollars. So, just looking at it today, that comes in at roughly eighteen mills of non-school tax, other than like, you know, the debt mills. So it's not your six-mill state tax, and it's not your eighteen-mill, um, uh, homestead tax. That's gonna get you an extra twenty grand. That's gonna cover half your assessing cost roughly. So right there, you're looking at a pretty decent net positive, in my opinion, in terms of the nickels and dimes. So if you look at our current taxable value of a hundred and nine million, um, with our rollback this year, we're projected to collect about eighty-eight thousand bucks. One full mill gets you a hundred and nine, two fill mills get you two nineteen and change. Not even throwing in the one percent admin fee, you're looking at a net positive to your general fund of almost sixty thousand dollars. More, quite frankly, because that number, the seventy-two number, is the election year number.
Yeah.
So, the not-election year number, you know. But you're still gonna have the initial capital outlay to buy election equipment, training, those type of things, um, you know, but worst-case scenario, if you're looking at fifty-eight grand additional in general fund revenue. And if you think about it from the perspective of, we also currently levy a third of a mill for dedicated road patrols. And if you didn't do that, instead of our residents paying two point one and change and going to two mills, you are actually sleeping them if you incorporate at this level and don't do another road knowledge. Um, other costs that we would likely see, um, we're definitely gonna need to increase compensation for the clerk or consider a part-time position to help with the added tax billing collection and election matters, and assessing, and we already talked about, would most likely be through a contracted position like we have currently with both townships. Would we be able to offer as good, if not better, services for our residents? I think we would. Elections would be held in this building right here, in this room right here, where we used to hold elections, before the state said you couldn't do it. Unlike our townships, we are full-time staffed and open five days a week. We have, no offense, but more robust online services available to our residents. And if you think about taxation, your border review, that would be the ones you would go to to complain about your assessing, would be your neighbors. You wouldn't be beholden to anybody outside of the village. It would truly be yourselves. Which is one of the biggest advantages. You have full political control over the community. You have full control over your operational village and the elimination of dual taxation, reduces a layer of government, and ensures systemless assessing services. Right now, we're in a great spot. Denise Hall does both townships. She is fantastic. That is the exception and not the norm for the twenty years of that year. Um, the different townships assessing practices have been very problematic in years past.
And it can change.
It can change arbitrarily. So what does the incorporation process of, like, the state boundary commission is under the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, and they are the ones who govern the process. Two beginning steps. You contact the Bureau of Elections concerning petition wording, that kind of stuff. And you need to get a map created with an accurate legal description of the boundaries of the proposed city. That shouldn't be too hard to do. And the petition process, I don't think would take terribly long either. Based on our population, you need to either collect five percent of the registered, or the residents, or a hundred signatures, whichever is more. Five percent of eighteen twenty-nine is ninety-two people, so you need a hundred signatures, registered voters in the community in support of the city. Those petitions would then be submitted to the State Boundary Commission, along with oath from all the petition circulators, you know, because you have to present a copy of the map and, you know, do that kind of stuff. And once they are submitted, the State Boundary Commission has to schedule a public hearing within sixty to two hundred and twenty days. That all right? Like, we could do it in two months, we can do it in ten months. Um, the Office of Land Survey and Remuneration has to determine if the petitions and the legal descriptions are legally sufficient. At the first hearing, they collect comments. Uh, stakeholders are given thirty days to respond and write into the comments that they hear from at the hearing. Both the village and the townships are afforded time to speak, which is one of those things that's, you know, two against one in our case. So it's first hearing. You'll get a bunch of questions. This is literally the questions from nineteen ninety-five that were asked to our forefathers. So, some of the questions. Why is incorporation necessary or desirable? Have you reviewed alternatives that might accomplish your goals without incorporation? What were these alternatives and why were they rejected? At this time, what governmental services are provided to the area you propose for incorporation? What additional or new governmental services do you expect to be made available if the village is incorporated? Are these services available without incorporation? From whom and under what conditions? If incorporation is approved, what would be the impact on the village, on the townships, and on the greater community? If incorporation was expanded, this was unique to us, because we had submitted our boundaries that we wanted, and they said, no, let's make it a big square. Um, which we thought. Um, what would be the impact? If incorporation is denied, what would be the impact on the area you propose to be a new village, on the townships, and on the greater community? Um, those were the six questions they asked that we had to answer. Um, obviously, we're going to advance the things that we've already talked about tonight, on why we think this is a good idea. Townships are going to come forward and say, wait, this is going to be a huge problem for us. Based on two thousand twenty-three's numbers, um, our taxable value represents forty-seven point six percent of Sherman Township's total taxable value. And this doesn't have a huge impact, because once we incorporate as a village, they no longer counted our residents towards their revenue sharing, but we make up forty-one point six percent of Sherman Township's population. Brumfield Township, forty-five percent of their taxable value as of two thousand twenty-three was located in the village, and we comprise twenty-eight and a half percent of their population. So they're going to come in and say, you know, hey, we're going to lose forty-five, forty-seven percent of our tax capture if this happens. Because village residents, if you're in a city, you don't pay township taxes anymore. You're not a resident of the township.
So does it decrease their costs? I mean, are not being members of their township, does that decrease their costs?
Not substantially, yeah.
All right, so they're just gonna get less money.
They're just gonna get less money. The other concern is the law also states that assets and liabilities of the townships affected by the incorporation shall be divided on the effective date of the incorporation. The legal structure to this is, hey, all of these village residents that have paid taxes to your township for decades helped you build up your fund balance, helped you build up your assets, helped you build your balance sheet. They're entitled to that share when they hit the road. As of the two thousand twenty-two audit, the net position of Brumfield Township was seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine eighty-two. Sherman's was one point three million. And probably the biggest concern of all, out of all these, that would have to be discussed part to part. So Sherman and Ottawa Townships have a joint fire department that we contract with. Sherman Township funds it through a one-mill township-wide village. We do a special assessment on our Brumfield side to make up that difference. Um, if we're no longer in said township, we no longer pay that one mill on the Sherman Township side. We would need to essentially have the one-mill special assessment cover the whole village. You know. So I think we're in a position where we can easily say it's gonna not have a negative impact on the fire department if we do the special assessment village-wide, so it's
I'm sorry, you weren't done yet.
No, go ahead.
Why wouldn't we just, why would it be a special assessment, and why at that time don't we just think of having a one-mill fire department?
You could, you could add the one mill in the charter, but that would be subject to heavily. So you'd be point eight, point eight, point nine, you wouldn't get the full mill then. So if you do the special assessment, you can levy the one mill every year. As opposed to going back to the voters every two or four years to renew it to stay at the one mill.
So in Sherman Township, it would cost?
Same, same amount.
It'd be the same amount.
It'd be one mill. You know, and, and the other reason would be when you, let's say you incorporate, and that's done in an election, you're not levying that mill as a city. You would need to wait till the next election before you could present that to the voters to levy via voter-approved taxation, as opposed to special assessment. Does that make sense? So if the voters of the community approve, approve incorporation, let's say in November of twenty-six, well, you're a city at that point in time. So the township can't collect that one mill. You don't have another election until sometime in twenty-seven, maybe, if you've got a, an odd one coming up, or the presidential primary in twenty-eight. So there's that gap before you can go back to the voters, because there's just not an election schedule to levy. Does that make sense? Because just like when we incorporate as a village, you're a village on day one. You're a city on day one after you vote or say yes.
Can you go back one slide?
Yeah.
Why that to me again?
Please, so the, the law requires the division of assets, because you've been paying property taxes to this entity forever. When you leave, you're entitled to your prorated share of what has been contributed to build up that balance sheet or that position. And, you know, there's always the liability question. Well, neither township has any debt. So it's, it's purely an asset scenario. What has been commonly done by other villages that have went through this process is, this is kind of we won't go after this if you don't fight us.
Cause it actually. That's what I thought. We don't have to get that, but we can claim that.
And based on our percentage of the township's taxable values, I would certainly recommend that we not go after this. Right, you know, we don't wanna, we don't wanna decimate them. We don't wanna you know, we, we don't wanna be that way.
Right.
You know, we have our reasons, and our reasons are, I think, pretty solid that we should pursue this. But we're not gonna do that at the expense of, of this too. I mean, that just wouldn't be fair or right, I think. Especially if we can resolve this one in amicable terms, you know. So the State Boundary Commission, after they do the hearing, this is the section of the MCL that says this is the criteria that they will base their decision on. So population, population density, land area, natural boundaries, future growth, need for organized community services, and the alternative for service delivery and the effect on the remaining area. The township, general effect on the community and relationship to any land use plans. Well, both are under county zoning, so that one's pretty, pretty muted.
How does it affect our trash collection?
Doesn't.
Okay, so we don't have to. Okay, I'm like, thank you.
The only relationship that we formally have with the township is the fire department.
Got it. Okay, good. All right.
So, the, uh, they send you a letter that looks exactly like this, because that's what's up on the board. Summary of proceedings, findings, and fact of order, where they, you know, the record indicated that, you know, fire protection is provided this way, and they don't provide water, they don't write sewer, you know, so they, they do this, and then they issue an order whether or not to move forward. And if they approve it, the clerk of each affected municipality, including the townships, um, is notified that they need to essentially plan for the election of a nine-member charter commission. That is a number set by the Home Rule Village Act. Nine members, charter commission. They must reside in the area that is going to be incorporated and to be nominated. They are required to get twenty signatures of registered voters from said area. Charter commission has ninety days from its first meeting to draft a charter. The charter is sent to the governor for legal review. Once it's reviewed by the governor's office, it must be published in full, two to four weeks before an election to ratify. I was gonna do a side-by-side of, you know, this is what's in our charter versus what's supposed to be in a city charter, and our charters covers it all. You know, there's nothing in there that we, you know, would be a substantial change that we would need to deal with. Charter election after the election, um, that election you also have to have on the ballot, the people seeking to be in the offices that the charter is going to create. So you can't ratify the charter and not have someone elected as mayor and city council and clerk and that kind of stuff at the same time, so the first question would be, shall the charter be ratified, and then, you know, who do you wanna vote for premier, who do you wanna vote for council, et cetera, so.
Actually, at the general election?
Yeah, because they pass.
Oh, true.
They pass, is it?
Yep.
Okay.
So, summary. In the, in the package, you've got the, kind of the step sheets from layer on. But it is a lengthy process. It would take, my guess, two years to go through this start to finish. I think it would potentially be a tax savings to our residents, especially if we are able to do the road patrols out of that bump in our general fund. Um, I believe you'd also likely be able to offer better service delivery to our residents. No offense, just coming from being open five days a week. Um, based on the twenty thirty census, you know, we may lose this window until twenty forty if we don't act within the next six years. I think ironing out these issues with the townships would be the biggest things to work through. And that is incorporation in a nutshell.
So the incorporation, I guess what I was getting at with the trash is, we're not required to provide trash collection out of our two mills. Nope.
Nope, we would be able to maintain the same flexibility we have right now.
So if we went for a city, would it's automatic two, two mills?
No. No, you could. I just use two mills, it would be tax-neutral. If you don't cap it in the charter, it could go up to twenty by statute.
What would we be doing? Would we be capping it, or would we?
My recommendation would be to cap it to, I mean, I, you know, to me, I think that is, that is our biggest selling point here, is better service with less taxation, you know, more or less.
So, but Sherman Township would be, I mean, right now, it's how do I wanna say it? If we get two mills, then it's two mills for Sherman Township plus one mill special assessment.
Yeah, which, essentially, right now, you're paying one mill to the village, one mill to the township, one mill for fire.
Right.
You're paying three. And then we have the third of a mill for road patrols on top of that.
Right.
If we just did two mills for the village and then one mill for fire, it's, it's essentially tax-neutral at that point in time. So you essentially, our residents, instead of paying a hundred and nine thousand dollars to our respective townships, would be paying that to us.
Okay, and we can put that back into.
Back into the community, you know, and, uh, I, I had a conversation with, um, you know, Denise Livermore about some other stuff. We were talking kind of village township-type discussion and you know, she said, you know, in the past, you know, there had been comments about when the village puts stuff on the ballot, why, you know, why aren't they paying for this on the general election? It's like, I hope you remind them that we make up forty-five percent of your taxable value. So forty-five cents out of every tax dollar you're getting on property taxes is coming from the village. She's like, oh, I do, I do.
Okay, so Sherman gets forty-seven cents.
Yeah.
My understanding was that we would submit for this prior, and then we would have to have a vote for the members of the community to say, yeah or no.
So there's two different elections that. So there's two different elections that you have to have. The first election. After you get through the sufficiency of the petition process with the boundary commission is the election of the charter commission. So that one's pretty simple. It's, it's. Yep. And those can be members of the council. They can be current village officials. Yes. Is what the law says. Doesn't have to be, but the current officials do have the ability to serve on the charter commission.
And then that's where you either have. A strong mayor.
Correct.
Or a city manager. You decide.
Yep, or a weak mayor.
Or a weak mayor with a city manager.
Yeah, so the, the charter commission process.
That's where you.
Is the only legal way that you have to change your form of government. So when we went through charter review four years ago, I think it was. You know, that was something that. I didn't wanna be terribly involved with that committee because I wanted them to have the autonomy, if that's the direction they wanted to go in the community, to not feel obligated to not do that. Um, they were maybe well aware of that, um, option. They don't wanna take it. That's why I'm still here. But, um, you know, that is one of the changes that can be made in that process is going to a strong mayor, form of government. You can have. Um, you know, with the elections having to be at large, it narrows down, like, you know, you couldn't do. You know, a dedicated rep from that side of the lake and this side of the lake, and then some at large, like, they all have to be at large at that point in time.
Right, it can be wards or.
But you could, you could potentially change it so that. Instead of having four and three, as we do right now. You could have the general law style of three and three and the president being a two-year term and have the president elected separately. You could have it done the same way we do it now. Where you elect four and three and then the council determines who's who, you know.
I mean, we have to know what to stake at that point. And you, we have to pick.
We have a contract with you. This is kind of a touchy subject, but nobody is there but us. We have a contract with you.
Of the camera. The camera. In case you are wondering, my contract does have a severance clause. It says if the community votes to change the form of government. Uh, it triggers my severance at that point in time, so.
Right. Do we have any way of getting out of that?
No, I mean, that's a legitimate thing because you're gonna be coming on and, and I would assume that you're gonna stay on. The same capacity, maybe a different title or something like that. So I don't have a problem with that, but if, if it kicks in, that you get paid off and then. All that money, plus we have to hire you.
My severance isn't that substantial, but, you know. You know, I. I, I don't think there's a, a big push to change the form of government. Um, I haven't heard people saying, you know, we need to go to a strong mayor, like.
I, I would rather not do that.
You know, it's.
Well, you see, we have more people up for a, uh, election and they're unopposed.
Yeah.
So.
Right.
We have the best trouble getting seven.
Oh, I agree.
You're gonna have trouble getting nine.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but I think it's more, now we're starting to see more people wanting to get into it, you know.
You know, and, and you guys are also conservative ambassadors. If you don't wanna be on the charter commission, you can talk to your friends and neighbors and say. This is what this job entails. It's a, it's a three-month gig, you know, that's what we had to do four years ago. You know, we'll go through the whole charter as it is, and if you wanna change stuff, let us know, you know, otherwise. We can be in and out of here pretty quick, folks.
Yeah.
So you could be the mayor?
No, no.
Why? You live here. Can't you be a lawyer? You don't wanna be the mayor?
Let me, the mayor have been an elected official. I've held the, uh, the position of council member. There's a plaque up on my wall. I like this seat a lot better.
Okay.
But technically, yes. Okay, any other questions? Good food for thought. Thank you for that.
Yes.
Summary of it. Well, explanation.
I do have one question, I'm sorry.
Tim, with the timeline we're discussing. What timeline would you give the board to make a decision on this to be able to implement that within that time structure?
I mean, the first step of the process really is reaching out to the boundary commission and the Bureau of Elections on petitions, like. You know, I would say think this over for the next month. We can talk about it next month if you want me to at least make that initial call, then. You know, the map part is pretty well done. You know, reach out to elections and go from there and at the same time, you know, that would be the. The cue to say, you know, why don't you reach out and have a couple of conversations with your township people as well, just so, you know. If we are moving forward, they know and, you know, know what we're hoping to achieve.
Do you see any reason to go out to the community and ask them? We are seriously thinking of. Changing from a village to a township, uh, uh, I mean, to a city. Uh, what's your input?
Yeah, I mean, I think having that type of presentation that I just ran through is what they need to, to, to hear and see, you know, understand that. This is what this process would look like and here's what we see being the benefits to you and. And honestly, it's less government, less taxes at the end of the day and more services.
How do you see that information to them?
Well, I mentioned there are seven ambassadors here at the table tonight.
You could do a YouTube video.
I could definitely do a YouTube video.
Cool.
We could definitely do some newsletters.
The one you did for, I think it was Lake Traging was good.
Yes, I agree.
Remember that one? And we don't wanna do it on a, uh, even year, do we? It doesn't really matter.
I don't think it really matters.
Okay.
You know, I think, I think we have a, a very intelligent electorate here in the community and if they, they see. You know, what this would entail and, you know, why we think it's the right move to pursue.
Or at least something to think about.
You know, they, they overwhelmingly supported tripling their taxes two years ago, you know. I, I think, I think the relationships we built in the community, you know, opened the door for the conversation.
Yeah. The next step, next logical step, actually. If you want the money to stay here.
Well, yeah, you know, that's, that's progression.
And the fact that no one is running against any of those of us isn't necessarily a negative either. It can be a, they trust what we're doing. We'd like you to continue. So it can be a positive approach as well.
All right, well, thank you, Tim. Any questions?
I like Lincoln's presentation. I would like to see that get out to the people though.
Okay, so we'll take it up with the next one. Question is, how do we do that? YouTube videos.
We, we asked him to make that happen, like anything else.
Make a YouTube video and see how much the phone rings. So many people start coming to meetings.
We'll get input right away.
All right, anything else? Public comment?
Couple of things, um, I'm thinking now as a village resident and former village council member, I'm only a trustee for two more months, so. Um, I have multiple times in the past encouraged Tim to talk about going into a city, so I'm all for. Taking the next steps and starting to go down that road and more than willing to help out, you know, as much as I can from the public side of things as of right now, so. Um, and then secondly, when you guys are talking about the barking on the clubhouse, for instance. And for the speed limit, stuff like that, I get why you put it at twenty-five, but until we have daily patrol, the police officers here didn't make a damn bit of difference. They're gonna go at whatever speed they want, so I can't argue against it either way, but. From the line stretching and stuff like that, I would still definitely want the two white lines and I would like to see yellow lines. The dotted one or dashed one, because during heavy fog, especially, those are essential to keeping yourself on the road. I have seen in the past, um, and I would like to see if maybe if it's something we could try, at least on one road, and the next time we do our painting, is they have glow-in-the-dark. Stuff that can go into the paint, and I've seen pictures in the fog of the lines without glow-in-the-dark and the line with the glow-in-the-dark. And it's significant difference when there's fog on the road, so I know there's an expense to it, but. I would love to at least try it on one road here in the village, see what kind of response we get from the people. To see what we can do that way, if it's something that we would regularly do or not, again, with expenses on that part of it. Let's all head.
The paint we used does has glass beads in it. They're reflective, um, and it's not survive winter.
Well, fine.
Okay. Cause I've looked and all those places are warm.
Just with the glow-in-the-dark, it's made with paint, not like a tape or anything, so, okay.
Okay, council comments? Seeing none? Anything else for the good of the order? Seeing, seeing nothing?